Good evening. My name is Matt Lawless. I serve as Scottsville Town Administrator, and you're now viewing the Scottsville Planning Commission Meeting, the regularly scheduled meeting from Monday, November 1st, 2021. This meeting is being held in compliance with Virginia Freedom of Information Act, Virginia law on public meetings, and the Scottsville Ordinance on the continuity of local government during the COVID-19 emergency. The public has several opportunities to participate and view this meeting online, by telephone, or in person here at Town Hall 401 Valley Street. The meeting is also being reported and is posted online in perpetuity on the county's YouTube channel. Thank you very much if you're viewing this meeting in the future. We're still assembling a form and setting for the room, so if you want to skip ahead three minutes on your video, they'll see us come to order. The time is 3:00 to 7:00 local time. Thank you very much. I'll meet this line now until we get away.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome tonight to the Planning Commission Meeting. We're so glad you're all here and that you've taken the time to join us. Thank you for those who are joining by Zoom tonight. We appreciate your attendance as well. Mr. Ensworth, could you kindly read the ball?
Yes.
Yeah.
Here.
And Castle Lambert?
Here.
Excellent. Thank you so much. You've all seen the agenda tonight. Do I have any additions or changes to the agenda? Having none, do I have a motion?
Question about the minutes for September 7th and September 28th.
We're gonna get to that.
Your last meeting?
Yeah.
Sorry.
It's okay.
I thought the email said that they were going to be available tonight. Okay, sorry.
Oh, sorry. I have other people over here.
It's okay.
Then, do I have a motion on the agenda? I make a motion to approve the minutes, meeting minutes.
No, the agenda.
Over the agenda, yes.
Do I have a recommendation to accept the agenda?
I make a recommendation to accept the agenda as is.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's carried. We will be approving the meeting minutes for September 7th, September 28th, and October 4th. As submitted, do I have any changes or modifications to those? Do I have a recommendation to accept all three?
I make the motion to accept all three.
A second?
Also.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that carries as well. And I'd like to report on some relevant things that happened at the town council meeting on October 18th that were discussed. And Councilor Stuart Munson, actually, the head of Business Development, he oversees that committee for town council. He announced that the town of Scottsville had won a $40,000 grant for small business development, and that was open to new businesses that we're going to start in town. And so if you or yourself or you know of someone who's interested in maybe taking advantage of part of that grant, please make sure to notify the town office and seek more information. And also, in addition, Councilor Dan Gritzko was elected as Vice Mayor of the council. Erin Root was appointed to another term on the Architectural Review Board, along with Robert Lambert, being appointed to one of the open seats. There's still one open seat on the Architectural Review Board. And also, the vacant seat on the Planning Commission was filled with the appointment of Molly Andeline, whom we welcome this evening. And finally, also, the Columbia Gas franchise agreement was approved for an additional 10-year contract with the town of Scottsville, and the CSX property maintenance agreement was approved. Okay. Now, in concert of our own business, I would like to turn it over for a few minutes to Mr. Lawless to discuss the first two applications.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We had two small specialty permit applications in last month. One, both related to doors projects. One for...
Minutes. I see it. Sorry. Excuse me. And this is where we are going to open up her matters. I'm sorry, from the public that are not on the agenda this evening. So if anyone has anything that you'd like to speak to, we have a small section here speaking from the public. Now, I want to share with everyone, we did hold the formal public hearing on the special use permits for both Glenham Road and Bird Street previously, and so tonight is not a public hearing. And so if you have something further that you'd like to add that wasn't already discussed as a public hearing, then this would be the time to share that.
Hi. My name is Sarah Woods. I live just off Lemon Road to make sure I don't throw over time. I know I did write it all down, so I'm just gonna speak quickly and then I'll turn it over to my friend here. I'm here to, again, respectfully request that the planning commission deny two special use permits currently before them at Glen Street and, or, excuse me, Glen Road and Bird Street. I do want to address a couple of things that I've heard in regards to this specific issue. One of them being mentioned on a local podcast numerous times. Some of these have been mentioned, kind of in, under the, a little bit, after fact comments with regards to some of the comments made. And one of the items I wanted to address is that this area has fear, fear of change. This is something that a lot of us have heard for many years, the idea of fear of change. I want to challenge that thought. I don't believe the citizens here have fear. I believe they have hope for change. As someone said on NPR recently, this is an optimism or wishful thinking. It's got insist, insisting that we can be agents of change. It's a muscular hope. I say this because hope begins with fear, suffering, and anxiety. This is something that this town does know well. Ever passenger train, passenger rail left, we were nearly wiped out by floods. There was a fear that we would disappear. But this type of suffering in the town went through like the floods produced perseverance. The town persevered where others who had the same issues disappeared. And that perseverance produced character. For our town, it created a character that many people love. It's a sense of community and togetherness draws people to want to be a part of it. And it is that unique character that produces hope. It is a hope that as a community, our elected officials, those who represent us, even if we didn't have a chance to join the other seven or so voters who elected them because they're outside the town lines, I say that you are our representatives because the decisions that you all make will impact us more than many of the decisions made by our county's Board of Supervisors, by Brandon County or Buckingham. But I hope that our officials will listen to our concerns, and we have a hope that our community will grow responsibly, and that growth will benefit our community more than the vacant town of developers. Many people have commented on how people compare to Prostate, but it isn't, at least for me, because of the look of Prostate. It's because many people know the history of the areas of areas like Prostate, Northern Alamo, and Eastern Alamo, one commonality is Virginia land company. And many of these areas cited. So I also wouldn't say fear of change. I would say concern based on knowledge. Lastly, someone has brought up Columbia, Virginia, and a comment was made that it reverted to lack of development. Scottsville isn't like Columbia. By the start of the 20th century, Columbia had lost 27% of its population twice due to flooding. Four times in less than a 40-year time period, Columbia was hit by a 100 year flood, where we got 24 feet, they got 42. It was that that sealed the deal, especially in 1985. Accidental landowners and natural disasters are what caused Columbia to revert. That won't be like Scottsville. Folks, please don't assume that this is fear of change. Your citizens have a lot of information and knowledge. 200-plus signatures prove this is a concern for the area. Please consider seriously your decision. Your decision today may have more impact than any other decision on Scottsville's 200-year history, except maybe the decision by the James River to protect the town. Please keep that in mind. You're going to make an impact. Please make sure it's the one you want and the one that you want to remember for. Now, I'm gonna turn it over.
I'm seeing you, Ms. Turner. I own property on Harrison Street, and I've lived here all my life. And we decided, a bunch of us decided, a group of citizens decided that we wanted to see how the people in our Scottsville units felt about the plans of these 72 houses being built on Bird Street and on Lemon Road. The petition hasn't been out very long, and it's obvious to us that this should definitely be rethought. There is a total of 255 signatures from the paper and online petitions. We counted 80 that are confident, that we are confident of town residents. Nine have businesses, own property in the town, and there are more. But again, we only counted the ones that we were sure of. There have been a few you aren't missing, probably under 20, that unintentionally double signed, that they both, they signed on both petitions. But of course, we didn't, they might have thought that it was two different petitions. We weren't sure. But anyway, we know that they blessed and we felt strongly enough to sign most of those petitions. Some people without state addresses have stated that they are moving to the area. Others are unknown connection, but the number is minor. The Scottsville community is much more at the limits of this town. It's Alamo, Blue Down, and Buckingham. And these people are operating better. They are very concerned about these developments, and they want them done correctly. One lady told me she didn't live in the town. Actually, she lives in Buckingham. And she wanted to sign a petition. And I said, well, that's up to you. She said, I do all of my shopping in Scottsville. I go to all the ballgames in the summer. I eat out in the town after the games, and I go to the library. She's very concerned about the fact the narrow road to the library having more traffic, as well as the parking at the library, and the sports events at the ball field. She told me she would probably start going to Farmville instead. She is one example of a person who frequents our town, who brings revenue into our town. But if it is not responsible development, she will reconsider her visits to Scottsville. The petition that I have here shows that there are many people who want development, and that's what the petition said, that we want development. But we want responsible growth commensurate with the size of our town. We want the growth to be community-driven, not developer or landowner-driven. As the petition that we are presenting to you tonight clearly shows, there are many people that respectively encourage the planning commission and the town, the county council, to listen to you all and to deny these special permits.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
We also have, this is 1999 through 2001 accidents along Route 20 from Charlottesville to Scottsville, included in that, these are some statistics from the ACS about population growth in Scottsville and how the Census Bureau does state that currently 2020 census data is off. They don't consider it correct enough to be a part of their scientific data. So definitely take a look at that. I also wanted to provide everyone with a map of the population currently and the zip codes that are mentioned in your own town studies about what is the greatest Scottsville area.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hi.
My name is Clifford Day. I'm 28 years old. I live at 110 East St. Street here in town. There's lots of things I can address. First, I want to thank the town staff for the notes that back and forth being included in today's agenda. I hope everyone reads it because it is filled with information, with facts, that address the concerns directly listed in the petition. Second, I'm very excited about the amount of people who are hunk about environmental protection. I look forward to you joining us in our fight against CSX who actively killing the litter front. And when they come to meetings, and we will hopefully be more than just town hall board and myself, to try everything for them to stop littering. So really excited that it was calculated, especially now we're in the first session. I mean, do we wish to participate in that effort? I have a point to talk about density and the housing market. The first document here, you can pass that now, and two, does case studies. One about the Pine Hill neighborhood, the other about the, well, who drove that Pine Hill. Pine Hill neighborhood has 27 structures, approximately 14 and a half acres, to a little more than an average acreage of 0.54 acres per house. That's not completely accurate. If you look, there are several parcels that don't have any touch on them. So the acreage measures actually, for each house, is usually smaller than that. Also listed up here is the age and size of those homes. The second case study is Harrison Page neighborhood. There is also 27 homes over 11.89 acreage for an average of 0.44 per home. This is also going to be smaller on the actual housing, housing parcels, because a lot of the parcels are larger than, that only have one. So in terms of density, there is density at the same level at which these proposed leases, there's already been a density including adjacent at the Pine Hill neighborhood right against sort of the proposal. The next thing I'd like to give you guys is some data about the current, the current housing stock. So, at the top, in historic downtown, the median here of housing wealth is 1925. The mean average is 1910, making the average age of our houses 111 years old. The amount of housing that under the ARB, which is another commission, meaning here in town hall, and the survey under fair or poor status is 35%. So 35% of the housing stock in the town of Scottsville is at fair or poor rating according to the standard of whatever the town is created in terms of evaluating the status of those homes. The, I did broaden it to a half a mile and a mile within town, and it did, it was marginal in terms of those changes, the median year being still 1925. The mean year within a half mile is actually 1897 and a half, moving the houses within a half mile, 123 and a half years old. The second document is a list of every house in this document, which is, we tend to do the establishing of Scottsville and short location. They, again, it repeats, so we are curious and listening, you're by address. The, it can be estimated that to re, to, a historical home, to remodel a historical home, could take anywhere from $100 to $400 per square feet on a home that is over 100 years old. So for example, a house, and this is true, example, a house on Harrison Street that was built in 1850 currently stands at, according to GIS and fair condition, according to the ARB and poor condition, is 196 square feet, putting it at, to remodel, a minimum potentially of $110,000, $10,000 to remodel that home. That's one house, and that's on the low end of the estimate. The third document here has a list of a lot of houses that were built by year with density. Our most booming year was 1945, when, incidentally, 13 houses were built, the same number that we mentioned as right away in the Bird, the Bird Street development. The folks seem to think that a responsible rate of growth is one that matches 1945. I disagree. The reality is, no one is going to put in sewer systems for 13 homes unless they are $13 million homes. And I don't want to see 13 big mansions on Bird Street. I want to see some big high density that matches the density of the town, which you see in these two case studies, this does. The third list here is, it sorts the houses by when they were built. There have been three houses at a prefab built in my lifetime in the town of Scottsville. That's 40 years. I'm gonna say that again. Three houses at a prefab have been built in Scottsville in the past 40 years. That is not a rate of growth. That is a rate of erosion. This town is eroding like the scraped tiles on the roof of my neighbor's house, which is 121 years old. The amount of houses in this projection is actually possibly not enough, because the amount of housing stock we do have is such low quality. The last thing I included in there, it quotes the, one of the, it said to the opposite of the quotes, the, and Matt, and I talked about the show today, and some may be able to change. But it says here, one of the conditions that was agreed upon in the development is considering that a mix of housing types improves both the character of the neighborhood and affordability of the new homes. The town requires that not more than 75% of units be built on a detached single dwelling type. At least 25% of units shall be duplex, triplex, or quadplex. That leaves a loophole that says that 100% of those buildings could be duplex, multiplexes, which we decide I should, I decided we do not want. So I would encourage the planning commission to reexamine that theory, to decide if that's actually, so that, again, what you're trying to do with the multiple types of dwellings, but I certainly, we don't want it to look like North 29, which is where you see units of quadplexes throughout the entire development. That's all. I appreciate your time. I'll leave extra, if you need, please get your copies with the town board. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
I'm sure there is a race there.
My name is Kable. I live at 651 West River Road, 200 yards outside of City Midas, but my problem is that I couldn't see you. I really couldn't miss anything because you all heard from me a lot, but I, but I did want to make a couple of comments. Number one, the first public hearing was held very early in the process, and it was intended to get the subject out on the table and to get as much information out. We have all heard discussions about ways in which the original proposal might be changed or reduced or whatever. So my question is, will there be another public hearing to hear what perhaps the final proposal is going to be before making your final recommendation? Or will we get to hear what that final proposal that this has changed and what was originally put before us?
If the planning commission goes to your recommendation tonight, they have the option to do that or to defer. If they make a recommendation, you will know exactly what the recommendation is and what it contains. If they make a recommendation to deny, it'll be simply that. And so tonight will either be a recommendation to deny, approve with stated facts of what that would entail, or to defer. Deferring would lead us to December, which I believe would be December 6th, and that would be the final opportunity, given the 90 days.
Then will they make your recommendations to the town council? Will they then have a public hearing?
Yes, they will.
There will be another?
Absolutely.
Form of public hearing?
Absolutely, because ours is just a recommendation.
Okay. Okay. Then the second thing here, especially, that I want to say is that it's really disappointing to me anyway, that the staff notes really don't address one of the issues that I think was really pounded into everybody, and that is the environmental conditions of both Bird Street and Glenham. Let me take one of them first. It is true that it's only 0.5% of the total 146 acres in the watershed, but my concern is that it sets a pattern. And so I would hope that in whatever you do with this particular developer proposal, that you look at it in terms of what's going to happen with the rest of that site, because if the rest of that site were to be developed at the density of the proposal in front of you, that it would have a significant impact on the headwaters of the McPhee watershed. Bird Street, again, we have yet, never had a Phase II environmental site assessment done on Bird Street. And to me, that will be a minimum condition of any kind of construction on that side, whether it's a factory site, whether it's the house above the hill. What you, you don't know, what you don't know, until you have a bona fide Phase II quality environmental assessment, it's always going to be in this street. It's always going to be a question that we seem to need to be a minimum requirement for a developer who owns the entire property. Do you have to do a Phase II environmental assessment?
Thank you very much. Just take a break here for one moment. And is there a Zoom comment that you wanted to, you had said there was someone?
Yes, thank you. Go ahead. I'm still looking here.
Okay. Hello, everybody. I am Nancy Gill and reside at 133 James River Road. I would like to make three points tonight. One, the comprehensive plan in 2006 called for the population in Scottsville to be increased to 1,000 in 10 years. This did not happen. The comprehensive plan is still calling for this increase. Two, according to the census, in 2010, we had 566 residents. In 2020, it dropped to 524. We are seemingly going in the wrong direction. However, as someone who sees silver linings, the statistics tell us as a town what we need to do. So the positive here is the age group between 5 and 17 increased from 13.37% to 31.3%. And the age group between 18 and 64 saw an increase from 61.84% to 68.7%. Ages 1 to 4 and 65 plus both saw decreases. Our school age population more than doubled in 10 years. This tells me that the demographic to aim for in expanding our town's population is this age group, young families. is this age group, young families who want to live here and raise their children. Great. You, as planning commissioners, have choices. You have options when deciding whether to vote to recommend to council or not. You can decide that twenty-four may be the magic number or not on Upper Bird Street. You can decide to recommend to council to go through the process of a small area plan on Blenheim Heights. This tract is over two hundred acres. I'll repeat that. It's over two hundred acres. It's not just nine. And there is a planned unit development that was completed by the Thomas Jefferson Area Planning District. It's either two thousand and four, two thousand and five that addressed the full property. I believe, we all agree, that Scottsville must increase density to be sustainable. The question on the table is how we do this. We no longer have the option of ignoring what needs to be done. Commissioners, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Gill. Is there anyone else on scene right now, Mr. Wallace?
No.
Anyone else in the public? If there are no other comments from the public, we will conclude the public speaking portion of tonight's agenda. Moving on to number five on the agenda. On the old business, the special use permit application for three sixty East Main Street. Mr. Wallace, could you please address this, please?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. At your last meeting, you saw those new applications for special use permits, smaller than the ones that are before you tonight. One relates to a new forest lodging use at three sixty East Main Street. The other is a ten seventy-five Valley Street, mixed use and a non-conformity. You called your public hearing for those, for those two applications tonight. I made an error in advertising of those, not everybody who saw it in YouTube. So we can't hold those public hearings right now. My apologies for that. I'd invite you to reschedule those public hearings for the next meeting for special meeting night conveniences. The owners are aware, and it doesn't hurt their business plans to wait a little bit on.
Good, okay. Given that situation, I would like to ask that we consider moving those special use permits to the public hearings of those to January sixth and deferring those to the new year. Do I have any discussion on this?
And this is for the, the ones listed here, three sixty and, and seventy-five Valley Street, yes.
Okay.
First thing, I'd like to know if anyone in the audience is here to address them, and if so, could they have the opportunity to speak? If anyone's over here, I don't want to send them away. And then would January sixth be okay with the applicants? Because that's two months.
I didn't ask about two months, I asked about one month. The non-conforming use at Lumpkin's, ten seventy-five Valley Street can continue after the sale. I had a chance to talk with the, um, the new manager and the current owner. They are allowed to continue that use into the, into the new ownership. The, the most security for them will be, um, if they clean up a special use permit, that'll allow for the best permanent operation in the future, but it doesn't harm the change of ownership for this to go by. Mr. Huber at three sixty currently has a tenant and is thinking ahead to a future use of the property. He's waiting on the expiration of that lease to make any possible change. So with what he told me, I don't think the two months away would be any problem.
Do I hear a recommendation to move those special uses to January fourth?
Recommend to the special use permit application public hearings to their January fourth, for three sixty East Main Street and ten seventy-five Valley Street.
Is there a second?
A second.
Here in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is approved and carried that those will be moved to January fourth? Thank you. All right, now we'd like to address the special use permit for Village Residential Clustering on Blenheim Road. And, uh, given what we shared this evening from the public and all of the other research that we've been doing, do we have any discussion points from the commissioner? Sure. Anybody else have any questions that you'd like to pose to the staff or just ask in general?
Yeah. Um, so I've heard several of you say that, um, you want responsible development. Could I ask what that looks like to you?
Excellent.
Um, I think for the majority of the community, the comments that we've heard, actually, and shared out as well, some of the comments are about the number being too large. Infrastructure seems to be the number one most pressing concern. We've had people on Bird Street who have commented that if there's any kind of construction work, if there's storm, debris removal, flooding, or anything like that, Bird Street becomes, um, impossible to get down. They haven't been able to leave their homes, or vice versa, because that small street simply becomes impassable. When it comes to infrastructure with regards to water, some of the comments have been that it is an aging, uh, system that has quite a lot of money currently budgeted out over the next ten years, um, between Regana Water and Sewer and Amaral County, uh, five million between the two of them, including to replace the aging, fifty-year-old galvanized steel and iron around Stewie Point that's not even set for another couple of years because it's already been pushed back. Um, we've had a firefighter, somebody from the fire department, mentioned that the water system is such that there was a structure fire on James River Road on the way towards Blenheim, that after the first burst of pressure, um, the town's water supply lost pressure, and the structure ended up burning completely because there wasn't pressure behind the, the, uh, fire hydrants. So it's stuff like that that's, that's causing concern. So when it comes to responsible development, it includes making sure that those infrastructure changes are in place from the town and the county prior to adding one additional numbers, because that sets everyone ahead instead of starting from far behind the starting line when it comes to adding additional homes, adding additional cars, adding additional, uh, need for water and consumption. Those things really need to be addressed, and so responsible development means making sure that we're not starting on the back foot. That along with the consideration that adding additional density includes what further buildout will be, and we haven't seen anything with regards to the larger property area by the same developer, or same land builder. So, um, as somebody else stated, the other great concern is that responsible development needs knowing the whole plan, so you don't commit yourself to something that's gonna end up causing, uh, larger problems down the road. Does that answer your question?
Um, yeah, so Matt, but haven't we already addressed the water system capacity at higher levels?
Yes.
Could you remind, if, I hate to put you on the spot, but could you remind us of that?
Sure. The, the, the water system has a couple of variables and a couple of different failure points that you spoke through. One is the total amount of treatment capacity. Is there enough water in the reservoir? Is the treatment plant turning enough water over every day for all the number of people who live there, or projecting needs? Absolutely, yes. We're at about thirty percent of our water treatment capacity. The system was overbuilt to begin with, and recently expanded with better quality filtering systems. Now, the next thing that happens is it goes down to a storage tank, and sits there. So we have the storage in place for two days worth of water in the city of Orleans. You asked a question about fire flow and the hydrant there, the failure there. That was a specific failure point which they immediately corrected. You gotta test your hydrants, you gotta test your valves upstream from that system. So that was a maintenance problem that they, that they corrected. We had this point come up in the, um, Tiger Fuels, um, market, Karen, um, this time last year. Would, would there be adequate water for the car wash? And what if, what if there was a fire at the same time that there was car washes? And so we, we went over, yes, there's enough water in the tank. The height of that tank, and it being at that rotation, the Bunnam Road, it's on the crest of that hill behind us point, that's to maximize that pressure, and everything below it downhill from there just has higher water pressure. So it's, it is possible that you would have tricky water pipe design at the other of these locations, the Bunnam Road. Mr. Schimper's done waterline design, telling me that the, the Bunnam Road location is a little bit trickier for water pressure as you drop a hundred feet lower to Bird Street, you get higher water pressure.
Yeah, so you, you probably have plenty of water pressure at Blenheim, too, because you're gonna put a new pipe, you're gonna literally neck the tank. So, you're right, there's an old, uh, undersized pipe between tank and the location used to go, that's an issue. That would be the case, that Blenheim, that we run it extra. And as you say, you pick up a lot of elevation, and I think that water running goes down to the tire factory was designed for flow, tire factory needs, so it's a much more robust system going to that specific bird here. I can't speak to other places in town, but those, I think, are both safe.
So if, if I might interject, though, you mentioned that the reservoir has capacity. The reservoir isn't the direct input for the town's water system. It's actually above the reservoir due to the turbidity, or the, the turbidity of the water in the reservoir, so that's only a backup. The, the water comes directly from, um, to, to your creek. And then there's also the, the added repairs to the storage, uh, areas. Linos need to be replaced, that's something that has been pushed back through the COVID over the last couple of years. Basically, yes, you have a capacity that is currently, or a, a water system that is currently running at thirty to fifty percent capacity, but it's an aging system. So what happens when you add additional water and capacity to an already aging system that has noted failure points or problems? That's the, the thing to take into consideration, and again, this is all available with Regana Water and Sewer and Amaral County.
And we, 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 I appreciate they're planning it out separately on our own, right? If the, if the town had to serve as utility managers and plan its waterline replacements for ourselves with just our very small customer base, it would be really hard to go for it.
And it would, it, it does clearly state that those items will, if the development does not happen as planned, it will follow the customers, so that's not just, again, Scottsville, that's all of the customers. So keep in mind, again, what I said, is that your decisions have the impact, or have the impact of a lot of different people. And so if that, if the buildout doesn't occur as planned, that does go back on to the customers. I know that was a, a comment made at one of the other meetings. But it is clearly stated in their ten-year budget plan that that is how it works. So that, that is something to, to also keep in mind. Also keep in mind that Bird Street, not all residents, all the way out Bird Street, you can have sewer. So what impact is gonna be made about, um, putting sewer lines to those houses? How much is that gonna impact those customers about picking up that additional fee instead of just water? So there's, there's a lot that goes into that sort of infrastructure that a lot of people, including the neighbors right next door to those development at Bird, are bringing up. And it's that sort of, uh, uh, conversation that they say they have been unaware of some of this discussion. They didn't know. And so these are, these are the things that they brought up to the other community members as, as discussions happen.
The, um, you mentioned the Phase Four Main Street waterline improvements that AC has, ACSA has scheduled. They did the East Main Street work in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, upgraded those waterlines and replaced the pipes with a, a different kind of material that has upwards of a fifty, eighty, hundred year lifespan. They need to continue that same work over on, um, the west side of downtown. That work is already in design and is two or three years away from construction. It is in their long-range budgeting, as you described, and it's already, um, not paid for, the money is set aside. They'll have next year, um, community meetings going over those designs, and folks who aren't already connected to water or sewer will have the opportunity to do so if they, if they choose. And it's a good thing that ACSA is already planning for the utility upgrades. And you're right, the rent cost is split between all of the customers in the region. ACSA sets the same water rates for all of their customers in Amaral County. We pay the same rate that you do in, uh, Prozay, Prozay or Ryen, right? So to the, to the extent that new development is paying for growth, Scottsville is benefiting from new customers that are coming online in Prozay, that's spreading out the cost of our infrastructure. If we get a million-dollar project, our three hundred customers don't have to pay that whole million dollars, it all gets spread out. So I guess from ACSA's budgeting perspective, every new customer helps spread that cost out a little bit more, but they're looking at Amaral County as a whole, and to your point, adding, adding twenty customers or fifty customers helps a little bit, but not that much of a difference when they've got twenty thousand customers.
But there, there will be impact to current citizens across the board. And again, it's that that people are bringing up. It's, it's that information that, you know, there are people who are able to dig into this a little bit more, but when people feel left in the dark, it causes a lot of concern.
So it sounds like, Matt, people who are currently on Bird Street would be able to opt out of the sewer lines if they wanted? How's it get filled out?
Some places have requirements to connect on the new construction and some don't. Justin, do you know what ACSA's regs are on that? If, if, if a new sewer line gets extended, there's a resident who's not on it, active in that.
I think that could be your regulations, so they provide a service area, typically it's a zoning ordinance that requires connection for us.
We, I know we don't have those required connections in place now. So that's something, because the, that system has been added to, and we have not required connections. Yeah, so that's, that's an ordinance that we could put in place and require, which would hit the, would hit that property owner with thousands of dollars of connection fees. But if they like their separate field and are happy with it, they don't want to change it. As long as we leave our current regulations in place, they're not required.
So again, considerations that will make a big impact. That if it's still two degrees or five years away, is this the right time to, to approve a, a plan that has to take into account things that may not come to fruition or happen yet?
Thank you, Ms. Wood. I'm sorry, we're out of public session.
What you thought was responsible?
Yeah.
You don't want to know? It wasn't a public thing, you did ask questions, the Pope.
You, you may come forward.
The extent what keeps coming up is, everyone wants to know what the whole plan is. We've got an area back there that we've changed. We've rezoned it. We rezoned up the light industrial and gave them the right to build thirteen homes. We rezoned the acreage down below the Pope, systematically making the factory and factory area development smaller and smaller. What keeps getting brought up is we'd like to know what the plan is. So we're getting at the spot zone. With spot zoning, we've already spot zoned. So the thirteen, or the nineteen acres with thirteen homes is a spot zone. Now we're being asked to spot zone a capital, but we don't know what's going on with the other capital, which makes it difficult to have plans when there are not the waters gonna be, there are how many homes, or how many more homes. Latin is the same way. So what if we rezone, upgraded Village Residential? That's not good enough. What is it, nine acres or six?
Nine.
Is it nine?
Nine.
Okay, so that's about four, maybe five homes. That's what's allowed there. We're spot zoning, we want to rezone, well, we've already rezoned. I think people want to know what the whole area is gonna be. What's the whole impact of? The spot zone that's being presented here in special use is taking advantage of something called special use to get around a comprehensive plan of what the whole development is gonna be. And I think that's been a major thing that keeps getting brought up over and over again. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Miss Scott, if you have a question?
This is about the, um, water check and what, if anything, we even have within our right to do to be doubly sure after
we even have within our right to do to be doubly sure after you know, state has people that are designated to be responsible for approving sites relating to stormwater? But what extra measures or what ability do we have to shore that up and make sure that it is sufficient knowing that climate change and, and raining has been changing for us?
Yeah. Like I, I, I put something in that staff report about Admiral County's water protection ordinance. They're the, the only county west of Interstate ninety-five that has opted into the full watershed protection requirements of the Chesapeake Bay. It affects eighty-four localities in the tidewater area and us. If these proposals were in Savannah, for Buckingham and Nelson, there would not be the same water protection ordinance, and there would not be a special engineer in charge of enforcing them. Um, I've gone over these plans with that engineer. And of course, he gets into a lot more detail on the site plan level to get into erosion and sedimentation, watershed events. And then it's second during construction. So him giving only the, the cursory book, he said it looks fairly typical. Um, and it looked ready for his further review at the site plan level. Like, like Stan said, there, there hasn't, um, there hasn't been any substantial construction in Scottsville since these ordinance took place. Um, so I don't know what that on the ground enforcement looks like elsewhere in the county. I might refer to our applicants to tell me about what, what is your, what is your interaction with water protection look like during site plan? And what does it look like during enforcement and construction? What should we expect to see to make sure that Main Creek is going to stay there?
Good, uh, Justin Schimper, engineer, thanks, that can speed. So the county process has a, uh, the supplemental, very detailed engineering drawings, a review, you think about three reviews, they'll put up plans, they'll say what's concerned about X, Y, Z, those in the back. I would buy the plans, the back, and again, they'll put little things that will make sure of protection. That will go on until they're satisfied the plan to be built meets all their requirements. Then you have a, you post a bond, which is developed, putting up a performance guarantee. Let's say, I'll give you, in this case of one, it's probably going to be a hundred, two thousand dollars, something like that. And what that's for is to make sure that if the developer should disappear or not fulfill their obligations, the county has money to pay them and fix these. So there's a little protection built in. If, I've never had to get to that point. There are inspectors, so once you start, once you're approved, you post a bond, they issue a land service permit. And then their inspectors come out and make weekly or five week check rounds to see what's going on. If it current rains, they come outside and look at and make sure things are being followed. And they will, uh, issue those to comply or fines to people who do not comply. And so there's basically a on the ground manager in the county who will go to the site once, twice a week and make sure the rules are being followed and that anything that's to be adjusted, it's done. So that's in the construction process. There'll be some kind of water quality measure required for this. So when you disturb any sort of ground, you got to make a, a net reduction in certain run-up storms. So for example, for the one year storm, so it's like if it rains three inches in twenty-four hours, you're supposed to make a ten or twenty percent improvement. So you want to try to reduce how much water goes off the site. That's to protect county streams, creeks, basically, from erosion. And then you do a water quality measure, which is to say they capture phosphorus nitrogen that might come from people's lawns or from asphalt. That gets captured in some way, either like a preserved, it's to filter strips. You can leave like a tall stand of grass and ease it off, and you're going to catch those of those natural things. You can install biofilters, other sort of ponds. There's various things you can do about that. So those are all like taken into account in the design phase implemented. Then when it's done, we have to turn it and as they'll basically prove it was done correctly, that we go survey and show the county it's complete. And then if the county is satisfied that was done, they'll sign off on the essentially the, release the permit and developers are free of the obligation for hers after the work is done, complete with county statement. So basically from start to finish, what we got here.
And, and that's, that's all deferred to county enforcement. But I'm, I'm not qualified to inspect that, and I would not be. But if there was anything that you were worried about in the community, I would call the county inspectors and, and their, their staff would work same in this location if they were.
Correct, yes, you would, yes, you could call if you were concerned about anything, you could call. There's a, anybody who's concerned with a file complaint, basically. And the inspector would make a special trip out there to make sure the rules are being adhered to. So they have a, there's, it says probably four or five people who are in charge of enforcement. Every day they go out all day and make inspections to do this sort of enforcement.
While we have you up there, could you also address, there have been, um, several questions again about the, the phase two environmental studies that need to be conducted? Can you address when that gets done in the process again for us, please? So that everybody is, is satisfied on management?
Sure, I, I, I don't know if this will satisfy everyone, but when it gets done is, is you go into your final like compliance phase.
Right.
So the, the steps are zoning, um, entitled, which is what we're talking about tonight, or pen the project, it'll be done under zoning regulations. Then you have your site plan process, which is always talked about, of course, the VS and P ordinance, erosion control by your storm. And then as you get towards the end of that, then you do, you kind of acquire mobility building. Understand all the rules as far as if you should start digging and encounter some stuff that should not be there. There's already state rules. What to do with that, DEQ has a program for this. And when you apply for a permit, you have a, you do your land disturbance, it's been out in for change anywhere now, you have a DEQ permit. And it has a list of things in there, it says, you know, what you must do. And they can fine you thirty-two thousand dollars a day for not complying. So if you run across something that's contaminated, anyone who's done since will stop the doing and deal with it. And it's just, I, I don't think it's likely in these sites, but there's risk. You try to do the thing, before you break ground, you try to do phase two, that, you know, look for things. It's possibly good phase two, you missed something, uh, possible. You can't know necessarily a thousand percent on these questions. But the time we get to this point, you will have done some type of phase two environmental assessment. The banks will sign off on the individual risks, minimize the risk for their own. And then you return, start construction. And if somehow you miss something in that environmental study, you're still subject to all the typical regulations about dealing with any sort of, if there was some chemicals or toxic substances in the soil, there is procedure of what you must do it. I know many contractors who would want to cross that, and then just say, oh, I'm just going to cover it up. Because the risk is very hot, you lose your license, you could find. These are, these are things even less around. So that's, that's the problem. But this, I've never had to do it in zoning case. So it's really not the zoning issue, right? It's like, is this land and its location based on infrastructure, et cetera, appropriate development? Environmental thing is really a separate issue when it comes to a phase two, right? There could be things like, uh, string of weapons, that's sort of, what are you developing around that, right? Markets were leaving string ponds alone to serve a net. That's going to be a zoning question, but as to what's in the soil that phase two requires, that's all outside of zoning in all my experience.
I agree.
Can I, want to say the spot zone on it?
Yes.
This is definitively not spot zone. I literally myself just went through a court case on this. And, uh, the, the spot zoning can only occur if there is no benefit to anybody except landowner. So the existence of one person who gets one new house, that person benefits from that and therefore cannot be a spot zone. That's the definition, basically. I'm just, people look it up, it was in Nelson County courts, Avon Country Shore was the, the county. And that was, there was a recent ruling on that. So this, what you're doing is not, when you, when you change the zoning, the residential was not spot zoning, and you, and you go a special use permit on a land already designated, whatever, it's not spot zoning. You know, as to what happens in the future, we can't predict that, you know, people are saying, what, what's it going to look like? We'll know, there hasn't been, you know, that much housing built here in a long time. Or we think it'd be great if these lots can be built out in ten years. That would kind of put you on a path, if we figure the map, that's about halfway to your thousand, so if you build these houses in ten years. That'd be great, I don't know, I think that'd be great for the community. People disagree, understand, but I think the people who live in those new homes appreciate it. And that's me, a part of considerations, so thank you for the extra time.
Thank you. No, thank you, Mr. Jim. Mitch, there's other questions or comments? No. Given there are no other, uh, comments or questions concerning the special use permit on Blenheim. Tonight, do we have a recommendation to defer to the next planning commission? Do we have a recommendation to deny or approve? Is there any thoughts on this tonight?
We're talking twenty-four? Twenty-four houses?
Yes, and nine acres.
And something in the buffer between, between those houses and Molly's. I'm beginning out that buffer, thirty is thirty feet. Yeah, and, and those places, and we just, or, you know, scale, what we're showing here, you're looking at the length of the, those lots. The length of those lots is a hundred and fifty feet, as shown to scale. So, you know, you're just moving one of those locks down. In most places, the buffer is a, you know, a minimum of a hundred and fifty feet.
Yeah. Which is still. Greater than the distance between the houses currently.
No room for parking in front? Or are you looking at parking on the land itself? Or is that actually the turn later?
Yeah, the, the way these are laid out, they, you know, the idea is they, you know, the top of the road is given shown, and there's um, adequate distance there. I think you all have a, um, it's a, it's a fifteen foot front setup. And so, you know, we'll just have the, kind of the size of the home, you know, five or three feet set back beyond that just to accommodate parking in the front. So that we have a minimum of eighteen feet from the, you know, edge of the sidewalk to the edge of the driveway. So we can park cars off, off the street there.
Fifty foot lot width?
These are shown as, as, um, sixty, because we, most of these are the ticket or between, or sixty.
So sixty feet might have a garage or it might not. And there's required to be off-street parking. So it would either be a long enough driveway to park a couple of cars or a garage or both.
Correct, yeah, to me, your zoning ordinance would have to provide parking on the lot itself.
That had come up before with a couple of the comments of adequate parking. Um, adequate parking on Main Street businesses is a, is a separate issue of, of traffic that we would have to deal with. But for in the neighborhood, the zoning ordinance requires that they be designed with, um, two or three off-street parking spaces for every house. The idea that the homes, um, when they're not doing parties, the parking for the homes is detained on the lot. Um, so there wouldn't be an off-street parking impact for that during regular times.
So I'm considering making more recommendations to approve Blenheim with a modified density. So I would be looking at essentially two homes. So the one that's in two homes. What do my fellow commissioners think about that? Also with the, the conditions that we have some concept matching so that the site plan conforms generally to the concept plan that we've been shown with the law identity. Um, and that we have some biodiversity, um, within the, um, the, the plant structures or the planting that we, um, place in the development and that it would be consistent with the Admiral County document, um, key mountain plan. And that we have pedestrian paths and shared recreation. Being important to the quality of life in town, that we have those pedestrian trails, which I think are already outlined in this, this particular concept plan to connect to our local parks.
Okay, so that acre for specialty happens with the, um.
Yeah, it's nine acres and they're in halves and it's going to be eighteen.
Well, a lot of acres, then thirty percent of it is.
In hell, in reserve, yes, true.
So.
But that's going to make it small.
Like this?
Yeah.
The units. Yes, because it's a nine acre site.
So that's six point three acres of available land. So that would be six point three acres of available land, right?
The, the project area is nine acres. So the, the, the amount for the purpose of calculating density is nine times two, eighteen in this example. And then thirty percent of that at least is required to be set back. So the, the motion as shown keeps this concept plan. But in, in what Mr. Schlossner stated, instead of there being twenty-four lots in this area, there would be eighteen. So they would each be a little bit bigger and this buffer would still be there. Is that what you're attempting?
Yes.
I agree. I think the density is the biggest issue for me. And so this gives a little more breathing room and less homes being built.
Well, and as somebody who has a chef baker of lands, I mean, it's, I do a lot of my land. It's probably more than most people wants.
Yeah.
Do enjoy gardening, like to help. Um, and I would also be okay with letting some lot be bigger or smaller than others. And the buyers can decide, you know, what their comfortability is. But if we look at eighteen units or whatever the number is to be that according, uh, you know, whatever's fixing it up a little bit.
Other thoughts?
No.
Were there any comments about requiring sidewalks or pedestrian walkways within the community?
Um, you have the trails condition as shown, as shown here. So it has the, um, it has the, the trail within the buffer space. And then the, um, the wraparound easement that goes down to the existing sewer line trail. Um, and, sorry, I'll say, in considering the character of this road feeling a little bit more rural, this one is not designed with a full set of sidewalks and street trees. These lots are a little bit bigger and the homeowners might landscape their own lots in a little bit different way because they're bigger and the pedestrian spaces in the back. Um, it does point to this corner here. Um, we did have a, a comment separately about, um, how this might be accessed for people who didn't live here. Um, so it's got. So it's got the pedestrian stuff that you can walk in from Pine Road. But if I, if I live further out on Blenheim and want to go for a walk, I think I would be stuck parking on the street here and then walking in. So modifying this with a little bit of a parking area might be important if you wanted access for others who are further away onto this trail. That might be something to look for at site plan. Otherwise, I think this pedestrian facility is helpful and kind of fits in with the trails that are there.
Okay, great. Yeah, and my thought was, for this particular place, the, you know, Holly, those, and Pine, those neighbors, neighbor units, well, at least don't have sidewalks either, so.
Right.
And I walk over there all the time.
Yeah.
But they're already included in the site plan, so for this one, so I didn't.
Yes.
Is that, no, is there further discussion on that recommendation? Thoughts around that recommendation?
The trails. I, I am a fan of the trails connecting to Van Cleve.
So. Do I have a formal recommendation on this special use permit? Yes.
I don't, I don't, I don't know if I want the town to be responsible for maintaining that actual land up there. I think we have the Van Cleve, we have the, the lands on Lower. I don't know if I want the town to be responsible for maintaining that extra.
Okay, and so with, without this, there would be the open space preservation, and property owners might maintain little, little trails on their own. But you, you would want to remove this one and show the open space, but not show town required domains.
What would that look like?
NHL, it would just be buffer space and deer paths. And there's some of that on the side. Is that what you're saying?
I, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
I mean, you'd be lost if, and I'm just trying to make sure the town becomes responsible more fast.
Yeah.
Any thoughts around that?
Well, I guess I'm wondering about the town taking responsibility for a space like that. Is there future plans for having more capacity for that? Or is it not kind of part of what we envision for the future, you know?
It is what we envision for the future. The, the Town's Comprehensive Plan calls for this network of trails that are publicly freely maintained and make it possible to go around the town without a car.
Yeah.
We have mixed results at being able to do that. So this, this condition creates an obligation on the town that we'll have to deal with in future budgets. And we may or may not do a good job of meeting this condition. But if we, if we recommend it, then we try to adapt.
I kind of feel like I would want the trails to be defined and, and set up and, you know, provide a somewhat safe and manicured or groomed area for more families in that area. Plus, I live on the Van Cleve, I would want to take advantage of trails. So my opinion is just that I think that it's worth setting that up, whether the town is able to maintain further from there. I, I don't know what that looks like, you know, what that objection would be, so.
Yeah, I'm sticking more in a limited scope where the outer edge of the property, which is close to the, the home site and what's connected. That is where the connection would be to the silver line, which I, which we have to come up with a nicer name for.
Yeah, we do.
I, I would like to see that in the same way that at the edge of, yes, Holly and Pine, we have that, they connect to the, and I, I'd say again, that I appreciate that, and that's maintained by the town, and that's doable, so.
Okay, but this part is less helpful, I could maybe just be, well, flowers?
To me, yeah. I love it, and I want the green space, I just, I'm okay with it being more, less manicured and more trees and country and, and native and wild as opposed to proven and manicured and more.
Yeah, I agree with that. I mean, I'm, I'm not exactly sure that, given the fact that we don't have that in place, that that's probably how it would end up looking. So I understand what you're saying and, and think that that would be a better setup for that kind of thing. But I just kind of think consideration to it, instead of just having it be, you know, grown up and, and nothing being done to it. So I, I don't know where to go with that opinion, but I would want the trails to be in there.
Do I have a formal recommendation in any direction around those ideas?
Right.
Commissioners? I, I made the motion to approve the special, special use permit at Blenheim Road with the conditions, do you want me to read them out?
I'll show it. The conditions are shown.
With the conditional question. Do I have a second?
I second the motion.
Mr. Ensworth, would you please read the, or the vote?
In alphabetical order.
Yay.
Commissioner Paul Piana?
No.
Commissioner Strasner?
Hi.
Thank you very much, we'll pass to one.
Great, thank you. Moving on. Realized rest, the special use permit for village residential clustering on Bird Street. May I ask your discussion, please, or questions from the commissioners?
Again, I think we have enough trails downtown, we have enough public room downtown. I don't think we're going to add an enormous amount of damage to the town by having that accessible to the town, and also weighing the fact that it requires town maintenance. I, I, I love the green space, the open space, that's valuable. I just don't know that having it available for the public to walk along and, and town maintaining, I don't know that it affects the town.
So Ms. Cop to me on it, with the, this base, the trail that's going through the development to the pond, be something you envision for those just in the development? Where that would all be removed as well? There would be nothing, there would just be open space?
I think it's beautiful as is, I just don't think that it seems to be maintained by the town.
Is there any circumstance under which the town doesn't have to maintain the trails? That it's incumbent on?
Absolutely, that's, that's homeowners association, where there's, there's features there. Trails, gardens, a tennis court, maintained by homeowners association, which might not be open to the public, but would be there. So that's the middle ground, if you want it improved, but don't want it town maintained, someone else basically.
And, and you may have tried to set back to the homeowners association. That is required because of stormwater management, correct?
There is infrastructure that's required to exist, which, unlike the water lines, does not automatically become a public utility.
Right.
So it's in there at construction, and it has to be maintained. So the homeowners association is the way of doing that, to make sure that after thirty years, when it needs to be fixed, that someone has set aside money to do that. And then, so at the very minimum, they do small water. And then they can add up to a swimming pool if they so choose. And the town doesn't have any real active HOAs now, and I'm not very experienced in working with them. So I, I can't say much to the kind of ongoing negotiations that we might do with the future homeowners association. If they build a tennis court, how likely get access to it? I haven't gone that.
I think, you know, if, if we do move forward with this, that it would be of tremendous value for the public. Same fact, well, to have. Like, I think it's such a walkable community, and I would love to have more space to walk. I, I think people would really enjoy that, especially with the, you know, the nature of it here. That's my, you know, personal opinion, and I think that is consistent with the comprehensive plan. I did want to consider making a motion to approve with the following conditions. Again, that there's concept matching with the, the current concept plan with the biodiversity. So again, we're going to front the native plants. I would like the tra, to see the trails included. But parts, to any and public rec, everyone in town should, should have access to the trails apart there. Affordability, the, considering a mixed use of housing types. So I don't want one hundred percent of the homes to be quadruplexes or duplexes or triplexes. But I would like to see a mixed use of homes going in. And obviously, the sidewalks are already in the concept plan, but I would like to see them to provide for improved mobility and safety in the future. A production and planning project should be completed, and plans conveyed to the town for use in future development and grant application work. A plan for sidewalk improvements to be dot specifications along roughly eight hundred feet of code street from the eastern end of the project area to Page Street. And then I would also like to request lower density of the housing there from four acres essentially per unit, or, sorry, four units per acre to three units per acre, so that would take the twelve down to thirty-six homes versus four units. I really do think, you know, I, I live in the small downtown area, so this would directly affect me and impact me. I think, you know, some of the, the comments that we've been hearing about the traffic, construction traffic, no matter what number of homes you put back there, you're going to have construction traffic. So whether that's thirteen homes, or fifty-eight homes, or a hundred homes, there's going to be construction traffic for all of that. So that didn't really play a consideration, you know, in my mind. Also, I live in a small downtown area, and my home is about sixteen hundred and twenty-eight square feet on a six hundred, or six thousand, six hundred and forty-nine square foot lot. So I think, I think what was proposed was consistent with, with the small area plan that we have approved and adopted as a town. But I am, I, I do take your consideration into account, and I, I am hearing the buffer density. So I think thirty-six homes would be better. About consideration.
Can I offer this wording with respect to Mr. Rose's point about the loophole on mixing types? That we, that we consider this mix of types, but put an upper and lower bound on both of those, requiring that a majority of them be of the single tenant type within this range, and that some, but not more than half, be mixed in there. So in the example that you've given, if the thirty-six maximum were used, you might have eighteen singles and nine duplexes. A total of twenty-seven buildings, eighteen homes. Another way to get at that would be eighteen singles and six triples, being a total of thirty-six, and twenty-four total buildings. Your visual impact is a little bit less as you bunch those up. And half of the duplex usually costs less than one single. The town does not have the power to require certain price points to hit.
Right.
So they, as far as I know about the town's powers on affordable housing, the best things you can do are increase density, divide that cost among more homes, and provide for the mix of type that one-third of a triplex is probably going to cost less than a single.
Can we, can we revisit the affordability issue as far as what kind of price points we're talking about? Are we still not under three hundred thousand or?
Um. I'm not sure, and I, our, our ability to directly impact price is pretty limited. We had the discussion on
Yeah.
construction markets now, and what does it cost to build a house? That, um, some of that is out, a lot of that is outside the town's control, and some of it is outside the builder's control. The material costs and labor and land. We can create affordability, like I said, with a mix of types and with density and even speed of approval that we're, we're adding to the cost for the engineers being here for an hour. So, so time to market does matter. We've already made the introductions on things like habitat for humanity, and they've been very clear about their interest in the site. But we can't require that the owner sell kind of lots to have a town.
Okay, I know we were talking about conditions, but.
Um, what else goes into affordability? Some site plan details, like we've, when we, when we specify that a sidewalk be to be dot specifications, that's a certain grade of concrete and, and other, other features. If you give up on that and have a lower quality sidewalk, that's maybe a rather path. It's not as good as the sidewalk, but costs less. So you have, you have some opportunity for cutting corners at site plan, but I don't know that that's where you want to go to make this happen.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion?
I'm thinking about Bird Street. That's concerning to me. I don't think that there's a lot of traffic right now, but I, I really do think that, especially in, in the commuting times and, and things like that, that we're maybe looking at a road that's just not big enough for that kind of thing. And so I have concerns about that. But I don't know what this, you know, what has been talked about as far as the road itself.
Well, specifically Bird?
Yeah. Specifically Bird.
Well, there, we had talked about numbers from when the tire factory was operational, and there were hundreds of people that worked there and peed in and out daily. And the volume of cars at that point in time would be greater than this development. And we had Vida on the line last month. Indicated that it really wouldn't make a very significant change to traffic on Allen Street or Twenty. It would, you know, if you're used to small town life, you might do this, but is it going to make a significant impact on the day? No, probably not. And, and regarding Twenty, we're just wanting to, we're talking about, you know, some acres, we're not talking about a substantial amount of land. We've got bucking camps south of us that has hundreds, thousands of acres of land that could be developed that we have to control. But those are cars that are going to feed on six hundred feet. So I don't, I don't really think, yes, it's going to, it's going to impact the street residents. The sidewalks are lax, and that's going to be problematic. And I think we'll have to look at traffic patterns on Downey Street, and what happens with, with Bird. If it has to be one-way, look at how it's, the street.
Look at Harris Street, we're gonna have to have those conversations. And we have options, but we definitely want to talk about traffic patterns, but um. It's really coming to a big significant impact in the everyday state.
Okay.
Other thoughts on conditions?
Definitely the the idea that they'll have to put inside walls. I think there should be such a narrow street, we can't really do uh street parking, but has to be good parking. Um, question about HOAs, what we will need to learn more about, that what anything can we do to make sure that some those are cited and they're not more powerful in the town.
The the town attorney has done real estate work um on behalf of homeowners associations and also against homeowners associations. Um, I think that would be a very fruitful town council work session topic and maybe invite planning commission to join as well. Um, like I said, I haven't, I haven't worked with them as partners, so I I don't know what those negotiations look like down the road. And it's important to be aware of this as an impact, that this would be a new stakeholder in the community. And especially if they have major infrastructure responsibilities and are raising money. It gives them a little bit of a parallel structure in town and near town. Um, that's an important thing to be aware of. They will have repercussions.
If there was no special use permit and it was just by right development, how would they deal with, how would that land deal with the stormwater?
If it were, if it were a low enough base density, um, you don't have to build pipes. So um, the um, the Morris household historic on Bird Street Act is on a big parcel. The rainwater falls on there, the gentleman can landscape it as he sees fit. He's excavated the creek a little bit there to make more of a space for to go to and that's managed on his own site. Um, he's also got older utilities and has his own greenfield. When you have a big lot, you don't need that infrastructure because the the big space can absorb it itself. So in the, in the by right version, that's kind of the reason for the difference between the by right and a special use permit. In by right mode, you assume that every house has enough space to figure itself out for stormwater and a well and a drain field and landscaping. And none of that is the general public's business. It's by right, we buy a lot of new things. Um, when, the reason we do special use permits is that there is more of this infrastructure that we have to plan and more impacts that might affect neighborhood properties. That's why we're getting to these conditions, that the increased density has benefit to the town and homes for people, but also impacts on our infrastructure in the future that we have to plan.
And so it's wide open right now, a lot of that land and this few houses there that have plenty of land, but still run off. So potentially we could be better stormwater management with this plan.
In indeed, if the, if the current houses are having runoff going onto the road because they don't have any pipes. The the new development would be built to a higher standard. And so you might see a continuing problem from an old house
Right.
and nothing of the new stuff.
Right.
Um, that would really bring that one home, the difference between professional engineering in one place and with respect to itself only.
Okay, sorry. Thank you.
No.
Do I have a further recommendation either to deny, accept, or defer?
I would like to make a motion to approve the first street um special use permit um for village residential cluster development with the commission question. Three units of three use for even thirty six.
Is there a second? Given I don't have a second, is there a different recommendation?
I make a motion that we eliminate the condition of pedestrian trails and leave that for the HOA, leave them as is in a site plan, but make them the responsibility of the homeowners instead of the town. And I am, I'll stick with the density that Mr. Strasser laid out of three units per acre thirty six total.
Like this, striking the town responsibility on both the trails and the parks or just the trails?
The town responsibility on the the trails and the parks.
Um, it, and I've played a part, it has, it has two pieces. Um, if you do this, you require public access and not town maintenance. If you do this, you no longer require public access and it might be restricted. That might create and it's, it's the difference in what's the town's relationship with this HOA? Where we have required them to have public access on their property that they're paying for. Or do we not do that and give them the um potential of dating it?
Mm hmm. And therein lies the problem, because we don't want to have a dynamic where people are feeling like there's a us versus them. I I just don't feel that. I mean, how much, how much are we talking about? What would this translate to? You can't answer what this costs.
The town's total parks and streets maintenance budget now is about a hundred thousand dollars to to maintain everything that we have. Um, I don't know what the change adding this would be. Um, landscaping, mowing, it might depend on the quality that you're looking for, how manicure is it? Or this side.
What's the last?
I'd start this side.
All right, the floor, let me think about it. Does anyone have any compromise?
Was it just one?
Yeah.
I prefer actually to just let them discuss it, Mr. Schimpf, at this point. Okay, if if you wouldn't mind.
Seeing as you got a motion in a second.
I have, yes. We don't have a motion in play yet. Do you have further discussion on this, on the trails? How you'd like to see them handled?
I mean, I I will say again that I think I think it would help to smooth over um any for lack of a better term, rattle feathers for people to be able to access the the pond and that hillside is beautiful. It's a beautiful view from up there. I would need to have it restricted.
Yeah.
I I, and I do agree, I mean, I don't know if there's any talk about actually putting a gate in, visible gate, but I don't want to create a us versus them mentality. I want this neighborhood to feel like it's an included part of the small downtown area. And I feel like we have such a great walkable community. People drive in from out of town to walk down there. And I feel like that will be, you know, a great addition to our town.
I agree.
I guess what I'd like to do is kick it over to council for more research and and thinking through. Um, my suggestion is that we we just acquired how many acres on the old bird at the cost of seventy five thousand. We've got the bank lead, we've got a enormous amount of public land available that we can make pretty and do all sorts of things. And there are conversations that are worse, we're having these conversations uh, or maybes. So I I just feel like we have so much layout that people can walk through and but I I would like to move forward and I think that the finer details of that.
I I I hear the concern about maintenance, inviting up more than you can chew and um. I've canceled being about to go into budget season, I think is really well positioned to ask for some of those cost details. And the the comp plan support of a big trail network is certainly there. The town is in high in its vision on that. If council has to step back from that because it thinks it really can't maintain a trail, I think they can do that. But if your, if your hesitation is like, I like this trail, but I don't know how we can keep the grass cut, like err on the side of recommending something visionary and then if council really feels like we can't cut the grass, just like that condition at the council level. Um, I guess I this is an appropriate forum for planning commission to aspire. And uh, if we have to cut that cost cut, that's a tougher thing to do later.
So we wouldn't have to maintain the ponds because that would be their water retention area, correct?
Yeah, no longer is it water retention.
It's
It's a reservoir almost now, isn't it?
It's there. It's a, it's a constructed thing. I wouldn't want to say zero. Um, it has a, it has a pipe and a concrete discharge and it's holding water and there's something below. So it, um. I wouldn't say that is a zero cost forever.
Yeah, because we're, it's more than just cutting grass that we're talking about. So that's, that's a negligible expense. I'm thinking that this guy, you know, moving a lot of signs, gonna have shrubs, trees and um.
Do you, do you divide that cost among six hundred people or one hundred and fifty people?
Right, and if we're talking about affordability, then then certainly the answer is six hundred people. Well, you guys can boot me down if you want to, but I'll say let's remove town responsibility for maintaining the trails and the park. But leave the rest of the sentences.
Are you making a formal recommendation?
Yes, so that's my, that's my motion, I make a motion that we approve this to move forward to recommend approval on this plan with the changes of removing town responsibility for maintaining the trails and the park. And reducing the density to thirty six minutes.
Is there a second?
Uh, if I could ask for clarity, hopefully I'll let Matt do his. I edit here and I just want to make sure that this reads as well as to. Is
There you go.
Is this, this is how you want this?
That's
But the, but the rant, but the uh dedicated to the dedicated to the town. Dedicated, okay.
That's my recommendation.
Okay, and we're, and we're, we're figuring out maintenance later. In some future HOA negotiations. Okay, that the public space exists.
And the language modifications I've been made about.
Makes sense.
There you go.
Same as, same as Mr. Stotzman's motion.
Correct.
But without the arrangement on maintenance.
Correct.
And still including, yeah, everything else, their sidewalks, biodiversity.
Yeah.
Yes.
Is there a second? Having a second, please call the roll.
Nay.
Mission for piano?
Fine.
Mission is good.
Fine.
Thank you all very much. We're very good one.
Moving on to new business, Mr. Enzler, could you please discuss with us the rules, the procedure and details on public input, please?
Uh, yes, after your last work session, you'll ask for a little bit of um uh, input on public comment guidelines. See your packet there in front of you. You have uh three examples from neighboring municipalities, well, not all neighbors. This is obviously perfect for city council, Elmore County Board of Supervisors and finally the Buckland County Planning Commission. Um, what we learned after uh further conversation with the town attorney um is that these are are uh very normal, uh perfectly uh legal and useful tools. Um, but the the best things to do for clarity's sake is to include in in your bylaws as a standard uh rule of procedure. Um, that can then be waived in any circumstances where you don't think they need to fly. And um, so if you're having a very small public hearing, just one applicant who wants to comment. It would be appropriate to make a motion to waive the particular rules of procedure that you put in place. Um, modifications to your rules of procedure, back up with the process on this or recommended by you, I believe, and then approved by town council.
A motion to suspend the rules is what we call that and then set up something different.
No, I'm sorry, I was speaking about modifying the rules. Um, if they wanted to include a, yes, include something new, edit, say make a recommendation to town council, town council approves it, or if they do it internally on their own.
The body gets the happenstance.
There you go. So we can do this all on our um, so in front of you here are a couple of examples. Uh, common things that you see included here are reporting names, addresses, limiting the time on speech. Um, uh, it is not uncommon to do uh in areas where there is a limited opportunity to speak. Uh, give priority to business owners and residents before uh speakers who are not from within the jurisdiction. Um, but again, these are all rules that you have the ability to create and put in place on your own. So I wanted to put these in front of me today as something initially to just do on and think about. Um, and we can move forward with this in future meetings, discussing refining what sort of rules you think uh would be appropriate and useful and going through the process of refining the draft on that and getting something adopted before you do some better.
Right. Could you please add this to uh the next planning commission work session?
Yes.
Um, that date on that will be uh to be determined, actually. Excellent. Thank you for that, Mr. Enzler. Appreciate it very much. Uh, before we adjourn tonight, I'd just like to ask for a motion on possibly um, just canceling the next planning mission meeting, which would regularly be scheduled for December sixth. As a commission, you know that we are going in next year, uh, starting with the first session of planning commission, uh, breaking down into committees to start looking at rewriting the comprehensive plan and uh getting ready to be able to present that to town council in twenty twenty three. We'll have a very, very busy schedule next year. And so I would like to uh leave December open just for rest and for concentration on personal issues that we might have so that we're ready when the year begins, just to start fresh. And so I would like to uh formally cancel the meeting on December sixth if um I have a motion for that.
I'd like to put forth a motion to um cancel the meeting of December sixth coming up.
Exactly. Right. Do we need a roll call, Mr. Enzler? No? All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? And that will be carried. Uh, given that we've covered all of our business for this evening, do I have a motion to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Oh, second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? It carries. Thank you so much for attending tonight and for all the comments. Thank you.